The um. No, this one you won't have to do anything with this one. The only ones you'll have to put in is twelve twenty-two and ten twenty-two. Because those are the two that are going to pass.
Good evening. I would call the March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two meeting to order. Common Council is called to order, Clerk Jones. I believe you would like to make some comments regarding the link for this meeting and other expectations.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the audience. For audio quality, your mics will, everyone's mics in the virtual audience will be muted. So that you can hear both yourselves and the council as well. If you would like to speak during the agenda item, whether you speak in support or in opposition, please say so in the chat. Put your name and your address in the chat. And directions to do so are also located in the chat. For privilege of the floor, we ask that you do the same thing. During the privilege of the floor, put your name in the chat along with your address. And the president will call, will call on you. For the privilege of the floor, you have three minutes. For public input on agenda items, you have five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I would first like to announce that if you are here for bill number twelve dash twenty-two for the property located the alley vacation for the Far Northwest Neighborhood Association, that has been tabled until April the eleventh for the next council meeting, two weeks from now. And also, if you are here for, make sure I'm getting the right information, bill number twenty-two seventeen, which the housing resolution, that has been tabled until April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. So any of those bills, if you are here for that or in the virtual audience, those two bills have been tabled. Thank you.
Point of order.
Yes.
Does there have to be a motion to table a bill in an order?
I was announcing it, and then I'm going down the line. But I'm announcing in the case someone is here in the audience or in the virtual audience, that they don't have to stay for the meeting.
Thank you for the clarification.
But thank you. That is still on the agenda. Yes, sir. Thank you so much for that. Now I will go into the original agenda. Disrespectful root or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and their actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person may result in the individual without notice, forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. At this time, we will have our invocation by Minister Ken Hardy.
Let us pray. Heaven and God, our Father, we thank you, Lord, for this meeting. We thank you, Lord, for these leaders. We thank you, Lord, for our citizens. We thank you, Lord, for our leaders, that they will look to you when the winds get too high and that they may not lean on their own understanding. We pray for your gifts of patience and understanding. And also, we pray for your spirit of peace in Christ, and we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much. At this time, may we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner.
Present.
Councilmember Wax.
Present.
Councilmember White, present. And Councilmember Tomas Morgan is excused. Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
Vice President Niskowski.
Present.
President McBride.
Present.
Eight present.
Thank you. There are no reports today on Subcommittee on the Minutes. And for special resolution commemorating March twenty-twenty-two, a Women's History Month sponsor, Councilman Davis. Yes. Please read it. Thank you so much.
A special resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana commemorating March two thousand and twenty-two as Women's History Month.
Thank you. The sponsors, please.
Appreciate it. A special resolution was put together because we do have National Women's History Month, and I didn't want to miss it. I wanted it the last time, but we couldn't get it done. But I think it's necessary to recognize all the women that are in our society that have made positive contributions to our society. You know, those that I serve with here on this common council, I have a wife at home, I have a mother, and I have cousins and aunts, you know. So, you know, it's always a good thing to recognize those who are obviously out there to help and support us. Without a woman, we can't progress as a society. So I just think that this is a thing, a necessary thing. And I'm going to begin starting reading. Whereas the first International Women's Day was a global celebration of the economic, political, and social achievements of women, was celebrated on March eighth nineteen-eleven. And whereas the United Nations has sponsored International Women's Day since nineteen-seventy-five, when it adopted a resolution to recognize the fact that securing peace and social progress in full enjoyment of human rights and fundamental freedoms require the active participation, equality, and development of women, and to acknowledge the contributions of women to the strengthening of international peace and security. And whereas President Jimmy Carter issued the first presidential proclamation declaring March eighth as National Women's History Week in nineteen-eighty. And whereas United States Congress expanded the week of the entire month, March of March in nineteen-eighty-seven.
And whereas the United States and several other countries around the world recently celebrated International Women's Day on March eighth. And whereas the theme of twenty-twenty-two is designated by the National Women's History Alliance, is women providing healing, promoting hope, which is both a tribute to the ceaseless work of caregivers and frontline workers during this ongoing pandemic, and also a recognition of the thousands of ways that women of all cultures have provided both healing and hope throughout history. And whereas current events establish more than ever the need for women to contribute to providing healing and promote hope, now therefore be resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana as follows. Section one, the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana recognizes and appreciates the countless contributions women make in all areas of life, not only during the month of March, but also during each and every day. Section two, the Common Council also recognizes and appreciates the five women members of this council for their contributions to the well-being and progress of this city. Section three, this resolution shall become effective upon the date of passage dated this twenty-eighth day of March, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you. May I have you both state your name and address for the record?
Lori Hammond, twenty-six fifty-eight Tomahawk Trail, South Bend.
Thank you.
Henry Davis, Jr., fifty-one seventeen Idowood Drive, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-one-nine.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the council? Seeing none, I would ask for a vote by the council by acclamation. Are all those in favor of resolution, the special resolution commemorating the March twenty-twenty-two as Women's History Month? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you so much. There are no reports from the city offices. I would now entertain a motion to resolve into the committee of the whole.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion on the floor and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
You didn't have public comment for the resolution? But you don't have to, I guess. You burned past it.
I don't have to. Yep, I think I closed it. I'm sorry.
No, I was fine, but I was just like pointing out that's what happened. You have public here, so.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
It has been motioned and seconded, and I don't remember if we all voted. I believe we did.
You voted by acclamation.
Yes. Thank you so much. The motion is carried.
The committee of the whole, the committee of the whole is in session. This is the portion of the council's meetings where bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with you that bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation of the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. We're going to have a reading of bill ten twenty-two. Clerk Jones, would you please give bill ten twenty-two a second reading?
Yes. Ten twenty-two, public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana to vacate the following described property, a twelve-foot wide public alley running from Dewey Avenue on the east to Howard Street on the west for a distance of two hundred and five feet plus or minus, South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair, that was at the Public Works and Property Vacations Committee, and it got a favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole.
Is the petitioner present? And I ask that you state your name and your address and share with us key points regarding the bill that is before us.
Thank you. Mike Dance from Dan Charner and Associates, sixteen forty-three Commerce Drive here in South Bend, representing the petitioner. And as we had mentioned in the committee meeting, what we're asking to do is to vacate a twelve-foot wide public alley that runs from Dewey Avenue on the east down to Howard Street on the west. This area is bounded by South Bend Avenue on the north. What we're asking to do is to vacate this alley so that we potentially can have a mixed-use development on the property. Presently, this alley bisects several parcels of ground. And the owners would like to combine everything together, which necessitates having this alley vacated. As we had mentioned in the committee meeting, what would also happen here is that after council would hopefully approve this alley vacation, we would go ahead and prepare a lot adjustment to create one larger legal lot of record for the development. And as had been mentioned by Angela Smith from Committee Investment, depending on the type of development we'll go in there, we potentially would be back before council to ask for a rezoning for the type of use that would go on this property. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner? At this time, then we'll go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of bill ten twenty-two?
There is no one from the public that has expressed interest to speak in favor of bill ten twenty-two.
Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition of bill ten twenty-two?
Neither is there one any present wishing to speak in opposition of bill ten twenty-two.
Point of order. I see some people in the audience raising their hands.
Okay.
Come over to the microphone.
The microphone and give your name and address. And are you for or against?
I just want to have some clarification because my name is Gloria Murphy, and there's a church that the only access to the church.
Gloria, Gloria, we're so glad to have you, but we need your address.
Oh, twelve, two eleven South Michigan Street. The church address? There's a church that sits on Howard Street. And the only access to the church is to the church parking lot is from the alley. So we need clarification as to, is that going to be eliminated?
Mr. Dance, or can somebody from the clerk's office put the map up? I believe you'll see this is on the east side of twenty-three, and the church is on the west side of twenty-three. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, so I believe this won't affect the church at all, but.
No, this shouldn't have any effect on the church.
We can put a map up so that she can see where the alley that's being closed. All right, sir.
Is the church on Howard Street?
The church is on Howard Street. The alley is right, the alley runs alongside of the church, which is on Dewey. The alley is Dewey's alley, I guess.
Petitioner, if you can.
Sure.
Give us something.
Yeah, the church, I'm not aware the church was using this particular alley. This alley is on the west side of Dewey, and it runs down toward Howard Street. There's not anybody using this particular alley to get to a parking lot that I'm aware of. This alley is totally bounded by South Bend Avenue on the north, Dewey on the east, and Howard Street on the south. This does not have a parking lot on it.
The church has a parking lot there, and that is the only access to the church parking lot.
The church would have to be able to get to the parking lot from Dewey Avenue.
What's the church's address?
Right there.
What's the name? What's the name of the church?
The Light of the World Church.
Is it possible for you to point to where you're saying the church is? Be careful on the steps, but you can come up to, we're trying to see where you.
I'm going to put a bigger map up.
Yeah.
This is not Men Howard Street.
Can you minimize him?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, Howard Street.
Because it's off of Men Howard Street. I think she's thinking here. This is Dewey.
There it is.
Howard, South Bend. So this is, this is the, this is the alley that we're talking about here.
Keep kicking, Troy.
Pretty sure this is what we're. I can't, I can't find it. The light.
Okay, wait. Okay. The alley. This is Dewey. So this would be the alley. The church is right here. That's a different alley? Yeah, the alley is up there, and the one they're doing is up there.
Yeah, the black and.
All right. No one in opposition, no one in favor? The public portion of this bill is now closed. Councilmembers, would you like to make a statement regarding bill ten twenty-two? If not, I will entertain a motion regarding bill ten dash twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to send bill ten twenty-two to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been seconded. Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right.
Thank you.
Bill ten dash twenty-two will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. We won't hear twelve dash twenty-two. It's been sent to, for the next council meeting, correct? That was the.
I believe we still need a motion.
Okay.
I would like to motion that we table bill twelve dash twenty-two until April eleventh.
Second.
It is the motion and seconded. Clerk Jones, please give the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Bill twelve dash twenty-two will be tabled until the next council meeting. Now I need a motion to accept substitute bill thirteen dash twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Yes. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. So we will now hear substitute bill thirteen dash twenty-two. Is the petitioner present? I ask that you state your name, your address, and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Yes, Cory Lance, six fifteen.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Clerk Jones, will you please read substitute bill thirteen dash twenty-two?
Yes. A public hearing on an ordinance to, on the ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana to vacate the following described property, alley vacation, street alley near eleven oh one King Street.
All right. Is there a petition present? I ask that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Yes, Cory Lance, six fifteen Cushing Street, South Bend. We purchased the property at eleven oh one King Street in June of two thousand and twenty-one, and we, by recommendation of Public Works, we are trying to vacate the alley south of McCartney and north of King Street and east of Kessler Boulevard.
I'm so sorry. All right. We need to ask for the committee report. I'm sorry.
This was in, oh. This was in Public Works and Property Vacation, and it was, received a favorable recommendation to the full council. Oh, I'm sorry, to the committee of the whole with the updated language of the substitute bill.
All right. Petitioner, you can now give us your key points.
Yes, we, the alley is not being utilized at all by anyone. There's actually, on the west side of the alley, there's brush and overgrown stuff there, so we are vacating it. We would like to, we own two properties, north of our property at eleven oh one King Street, lots fifty-six and fifty-five, and by vacating the alley, we'll be able to join our properties together and then use that for parking space and actually drainage for our, yeah, parking area.
All right. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for the petitioner? Woman Lori Hammond.
Thank you. So you're stating that the alley currently is not usable because of overgrowth?
Correct, and no one utilizes it because there's no garage doors or houses on those properties that would need to utilize the alley.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other council members? At this time, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of bill thirteen dash twenty-two?
There is no one from the public expressing interest to speak in favor of this bill.
Good step up to the podium, Ms. Sir.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of bill thirteen dash twenty-two? You can now come to the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Frank Mercado. I'm at seven oh nine Juniper Place, South Bend. So the development of this recreational center, is that right? Is that going to increase property taxes in that neighborhood?
I don't know if that's something that we would, we would have an answer to.
Well, that's a concern. I have a rental property on that area.
I'm sorry, sir. What's your question again?
Is the development of that recreational center going to increase property taxes?
Absolutely.
And the whole.
The whole area will get an increase.
Well, that's not very, sitting very well with me. Probably anybody else that lives on it.
Well, no, but that's how development happens. So as new things, new infrastructure is placed in there, new buildings, whatever that is, the area gets a new assessment, and it's usually an increase of taxes. Doesn't mean exactly that that happens at a very high level, but I, my bet will be that you will receive some sort of increase. And you can always appeal those increases as well.
So there's also a concern about possible trouble that might come from the youth that are going to be using that facility, fighting, maybe potential trafficking of substances because of, well, you know how kids are, they're going to gather together, and they're going to try and use that as like a, like a hub to meet other people. There's already a problem in that area with gunshots at night and drug dealing and whatever. And I think this is just going to, might even add more flame to that already problem that's there by bringing more younger kids in there and creating different problems to add to the ones that are already there. They're going to be gathering around outside the building, around there. And it's just going to be, it's just going to be a bad thing.
Hey, well, thank you.
Providing that, you know, that, you know, nobody's going to be watching it or anything like that. Besides that, you know, there's the Brown Academy that's being used for after-school programs. And, you know, now the same situation is going on with the, that, or at the Martin Luther King Center, when there was a shooting over there because they were selling drugs in that area, on the corner meeting there.
Well, thank you, sir, for your comments, and I'm going to allow the petitioner to be able to address it.
Yeah, we appreciate your, your input on that. We wanna make sure our neighbors are, uh, on board with what we're doing. But at the same time, you mentioned it being a hub, it's gonna be a hub for, for youth and, and families in a way that's, that's gonna mitigate a lot of the things that you're concerned about, the violence, the drugs, all of those things. Um, in fact, we've been on Portage Avenue now for four years and been in the neighborhood, the one, Calipar neighborhood for thirteen, and we've seen a lot of these issues, uh, go down because of the impact that we've had with developing real relationships and being invested in the lives of students and families. So, uh, I understand your concerns, but the, the, the violence, the drugs, those things that you're concerned about are only gonna go down and it's been proven the last thirteen years. Uh, the students and the families just need people to, uh, be in real relationship and not fear them. And you mentioned it being a hub for violence, it's actually gonna be a hub for belonging and safety and hope. So, while it might increase some, some property taxes by ten dollars a house, it's gonna provide a ton of value and impact for this community for decades to come, so. Um, I also don't understand how that's necessarily connected to vacating the alley. Um, the development of the property is still moving forward, whether we vacate the alley or not. Uh, vacating the alley just allows us to do a few of the things that, that are needed to maximize the property.
Well, my concern is just what's gonna happen after, afterwards of the development of that rec- center.
What, what I would suggest is, is that, um, is that you have a meeting with them and, and get to see their plans and-
Great.
And so that you be on board with what they're, what they're doing, okay?
And then there's the, the, the semi-traffic that goes down that street as well. They still use that King Street to bring, uh, heavy trucks in and out of the steel warehouse.
What they're vacating is an alley, they're not, they're not vacating in the street.
No, I understand, but, you know, if you're gonna have kids around, they're gonna have that big traffic in there.
We've been in close communication, we've been in close communication with Steel Warehouse and the ownership and manager there and they're, they're totally on board with what we're doing. And so we talked about that exact thing and they're, they're excited that we're bringing this to the neighborhood and, and, um, like I said, we've been here for a while and this is just in addition to the good things that have happened. I would love for you to stop by at our building at fifteen nineteen Portage to discuss further and show you our plans like, uh, Councilman Lee said.
Thank you, sir, the, the time allotted is up, thank you very much, we appreciate your comments. Council members, um, would anybody like to make any statements concerning Bill thirteen dash twenty-two?
I just would, I'd like to say that, um, uh, I've watched Transformation Ministries from, from the beginning come into the neighborhood and the great work that they're doing with our inner-city kids. Uh, they're teaching them job skills, they're, they're teaching them education, they're doing a really, really great service to the neighborhood. And so I would again encourage you to schedule appointment and go see, um, see their facility and what they're, they've been doing. Um, nothing but good things, a lot of hope for individuals that are, um, for our young people and we gotta find positive things for them to do, so, um, I, I, I support this, this effort.
I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill thirteen dash twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to send substitute Bill thirteen dash twenty-two to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Um, substitute Bill thirteen dash twenty-two will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I will now entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and report back to the full council.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The full council is back in session. This portion of our meeting is where bills are given a third reading and action is taken regarding bills that were heard during the committee of the whole. Clerk Jones, would you give Bill ten twenty-two a third reading?
Yes. Ten twenty-two, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the following described property, a twelve-foot wide public alley running from Dewey Avenue on the east to Howard Street on the west for a distance of two hundred and five feet plus or minus, South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Councilman Lee, is there a recommendation for, from the committee of the whole regarding Bill ten twenty-two?
Yes. Um, Bill ten dash twenty-two comes to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion regarding Bill ten twenty-two. Motion for passage.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Vice President Nis- Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Bill ten twenty-two has been adopted. Clerk Jones, would you please give substitute Bill thirteen twenty-two a third reading?
Yes. Thirteen twenty-two, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the following described property, Alley Vacation, Street Alley near eleven oh one King Street.
Thank you. Councilman Lee, is there a recommendation for, from the committee of the whole regarding Bill thirteen twenty-two?
Yes, substitute Bill thirteen dash twenty-two comes to, uh, the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion regarding substitute Bill thirteen twenty-two. Move for passage?
Second.
Clerk Jones, would you call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill thirteen twenty-two has been adopted. Resolutions. This is the portion of the council meeting where the common council hears bills filed as proposed resolutions. The title of each proposed resolution is read by the city clerk, a report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee to which the bill was referred to for an advisory review and recommendation is then given. During the public portion on each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. We ask that you please give your name, address, and comments on the bill. If you have any questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during their rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes, with those speaking in favor going first, followed by those in opposition, then a five-minute rebuttal for the presenter of the bill. Resolution twenty-two sixteen. Clerk Jones, would you please read Resolution twenty-two dash sixteen?
Twenty-two sixteen, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, authorizing and approving the city of South Bend, Indiana's opt-back into the state of Indiana structured settlement of opioid litigation under Indiana Code four dash sixteen dash fifteen.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, uh, Bill twenty-two sixteen was heard in front of Health and Public Safety Committee earlier today and it, uh, was sent to, it was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Let's see, we have a presenter, will you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, thank you. My name is Aladeen DeRose, City Attorney, with offices on the twelfth floor of this building. Thank you, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here to introduce this bill this evening. It is a request that you authorize and approve the opt-back in to the state structured settlement for the opioid, uh, litigation. Opioid litigation was the result of an opioid epidemic across the country affecting South Bend and all other parts of the state and country. It, it arose in the nineteen nineties when certain drug manufacturers began manufacturing opioid, uh, pain relief medication, uh, synthetic opioid medications, and marketed them heavily without, um, notifying the public or physicians that they were addictive. In fact, they were highly addictive and in the two thousand ten to two thousand seventeen era, it resulted in deaths, overdoses, um, fetal or, or, um, newborn dependency, um, and a host of other problems that, that our city, as well as cities throughout the country, have dealt with. Uh, last year around this time, we came before you to request that we opt out of the state's plan because at that time, the state, which was organizing settlements on behalf of its cities, had a very inequitable, in our opinion, plan, uh, that provided for fifteen percent to cities and towns and counties and the balance to the state itself, uh, for its purposes. Um, in the time between our last appearance here for this purpose and today, um, legislation occurred in the General Assembly that has been much more equitable and which we think is fair and reasonable. And the new legislation allows the cities and counties to, uh, participate and share in structured opioid settlements, fifty-fifty between the state and the local governments. The distribution has been changed, it was based on population, that is, the distribution of monies themselves. It was based originally on population or per capita. It is now based on, on actual harm to a community with three factors each being equal. Um, the amount of opioid distributed within a community, the number of opioid deaths that have occurred, and the number of persons who suffer opioid use disorder. Uh, the city of South Bend believes that this proposal is fair. The, um, the fifty-fifty, uh, participation also requires that, uh, a certain ratio be applied to different purposes. So fifteen, uh, I'm sorry, thirty percent of what the city would receive is unrestricted. Seventy percent must go to programs for the treatment, prevention, and care of, uh, opioid, uh, opioid residuals within the city. Uh, that same formula is used by the state for its share, so it will also receive thirty thou- thirty, thirty percent unrestricted and seventy percent for state programs also devoted to care and treatment and prevention of opioid, uh, disorders. So with that, we're asking that you allow us to opt back in. This will be the last thing we can do. Once we're in, we have to stay in, but we believe that, um, that distributions through this, uh, through this formula and through this state settlement is in the best interest of the city. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. Um, at this time, I would open it up for council, do you have any questions? Councilwoman Lori Hammond. Thank you, Aladeen. Um, do you, can you give us a, a number of those in South Bend that have been impacted?
We, we have, I do not have that data at this time. The, um, the data's been collected nationally and it, the, there's a national, um, determination of impact for every community. We have, we have ourselves collected data as to the, um, harms that, that we've experienced through the costs of caring for those who are affected, those who are overdosing or who have died. And that's through the police and fire departments because they are the ones who see these problems. We do have data, we have not been able to organize it in a fashion that we would, um, be comfortable sharing it at this time, but we have raw data.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Councilman Warner.
Thank you. Aladeen, uh, can you remind me, I, I believe last fall when we were looking at this the first time, uh, the, the state was, was it fifteen percent?
Uh, yes, the state was fif- yes.
So we've, we've gone up from fifteen to fifty?
Yes, fifteen to fifty, so it's a significant adjustment.
And then my second question is, I seem to remember from earlier that this would be, the payments would be over eighteen years or more?
Yeah, yes, there are, well, there are two settlements currently that have been approved and are ready for distribution. One settlement, the larger settlement, is between distributors McKesson and others and that is an eighteen-year distribution. It's the larger number. The smaller distribution is called the J and J Distribution Johnson and Johnson and its affiliates and that's distributable over eleven years. Outstanding yet, and we don't know what the numbers will be, but that, that's the Purdue Pharma and the Shacker, or Shackler family, bankruptcy, that is, I think has been approved by the bankruptcy court, but there have been, there's a time in which others, s- some persons can object and I think the objection was mostly to whether the bankruptcy court could, um, allow, could be the final, um, disposition of Shack, Shackler family liability.
Thank you.
We don't know when that will happen, so.
Councilman Lee.
Well, uh, but without any exact number, you said that South Bend stands to receive two point six million dollars and six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars?
Correct.
Could you talk about that a little bit?
Yes, it's, uh, it's actually closer to the total, the, the net is, is about two point six. The total gross is about two point eight from the, um, from the McKesson distributors liability fund and the, uh, five, six fifty-five is from Johnson and Johnson. But the payout after, after attorney fees is somewhat less, so the net is about five ninety-eight for the J and J and about, um, two point five for the McKesson.
And thirty percent of that is unrestricted and, and seventy percent of it has to go towards-
Correct.
Uh, programs.
Correct. It, the payout each year under the eighteen-year distribution is going to be a small one, so we won't have a bulk fund to do large programs, they will need to be probably, we'll see how we need to structure them. But they'll probably be small things or the funding of, um, of drugs that will assist those who are dependent.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis.
Sure, thank you. So the monies that we were talking about, I'll be coming over a, a extended period of time, will obviously go to outside organizations that do programming, that, that, that helps out with folks who have been impacted by, uh, the opioid crisis and also education probably for kids so that they don't, you know, getting caught in that web. Um, were those, would you know if any of the other, um, dollars go to like city-driven organizations? I mean, you have, you know, uh, crime prevention could be one, I, I'm, I'm just asking, so.
And I think we would look at that with the council's input, um, at budgeting time because these funds will be available for budget purposes for their intended purpose. As I, as I said, thirty percent for whatever use is appropriate as the council determines with the administration and seventy percent that must be designated for prevention care and, um-
So that would be like a South Bend Police Department, that could be like a SAFE, that could be like a GBI?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? Thank you. At this time, I would open it up to the public for, uh, public comments. Clerk Jones, do you see anyone in the virtual audience?
I do not see anyone in the virtual audience who is expressing an interest for, uh, public comment on this resolution.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor or against Resolution twenty-two dash sixteen? Thank you. At this time, the public portion is now closed. Um, I will turn to the council, do you have any other ques- um, comments? There are no comment?
Sure, I'm sorry. I, I asked that question specifically for the reason of, we've talked about members on this council not having a, not, should not have the ability to vote on their own budget because it is against state law. I asked a question about crime prevention and I'm saying that those who are a part of that, 'cause they will receive that money. That's exactly what is getting ready to happen, that they recuse themselves from voting. I, I know it's probably going through, but it'd probably be good practice that we do not vote on our own salaries or our own budgets from additional dollars coming in from the state.
Councilman Wax.
Give me a little more clarity. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It was two people talking at the same time and I was-
I didn't hear it either, that's why I asked, what you said.
So I'm gonna step back for a minute.
Okay. Councilman Lee?
I, I, I'm trying to figure out where, where that, where that comment came from or where, what do you mean by that?
What I mean by that is that you were for SAFE, which is, uh, through a program that the city helps- that the city helps fund and, and hopes that, that, you know, you guys do the best work that you can to prevent crime. I'm saying that this money is going to end up in your guys' bank account. And I'm saying that because of what we do here, it would probably be good practice that you recuse yourself from the vote because you are going to benefit from your vote today.
Mr. Davis, we, I, I, I work with group violence intervention.
You should listen to me. You really should listen to me.
Point of order. You have to let the man speak, Mr. Davis. You can't interrupt him.
I work with violence intervention. Now, we, we deal with gang and gun activity, not opioids.
Say, man, you can go ahead and vote for it. I'm just trying to help you out.
Mr. Davis, he's speaking.
This is not your floor. This is not your meeting. It's the chair's meeting. No, you're out of order.
No, you're out of order because what you're saying doesn't make any sense, brother.
Let me, let me interject right now. The money is not received, the money is not allocated, and the council has authority to have input, whatever administration proposes to us, which for us to guesstimate, or I think we can deal with that at that time. Your comment is definitely well-taken and noted in the minutes. But I think it's a little premature for us to argue about something that we don't even have the funding for and don't know when that's coming down. So if I may just say that to everyone.
Is there any other comments? Mr. Wax.
Thank you. I was just going to thank Aladeen and the rest of City Legal for continuing to make sure. I know we made a decision, decision to opt out earlier and they stayed on top of it to keep up on what's the best opportunities for the city. So I appreciate those efforts and look forward to doing good things with this money when we get it, whatever those things may be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion for Resolution 22-16.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 22-16.
Second.
Clerk Jones.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Resolution 22-16 has been adopted. Bill's on first reading. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 14-22 a first reading?
Yes, 14-22.
Point of order, I'm sorry.
Do we need to bring up 22-17?
No, it was already voted on and tabled and.
No, it wasn't.
Which one?
The Resolution 22-17.
Oh, thank you, thank you. There is a second one. I'm sorry, it's already on my notes, absolutely. Thank you so much. Clerk Jones, would you read Resolution 22-17?
I'm sorry. Clarification. Robert Roosevelt says you have to open back up that session for resolutions before you go back into reading the resolutions to go back into voting resolutions. You just can't call it back because there was a mistake made. So you're still stuck at first reading, is what I'm saying. You have to recall this section back.
Preliminary. Can you give me the proper language?
Well, since there is no motion required to move on to first readings, I believe that you can simply go back to the resolution and read it. If there had been a motion, a required motion, then it would have to be withdrawn.
Thank you so much. Clerk Jones, could you read Resolution 22-17, please?
22-17, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, calling for the cooperation of the City of South Bend, South Bend Housing Authority and developers to create, fund, to create, fund, and implement an initiative to remove barriers to affordable housing in South Bend.
Thank you.
I move that a bill 22-17 is tabled to the 25th of April.
Second.
2022.
Thank you, Clerk Jones.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
No.
President McBride.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you.
Bill's on first reading. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 14-22 a first reading?
First, 14-22, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending the South Bend Municipal Code at Chapter 2, Article 9, Section 2-129 to change the residency restriction of commission members.
Thank you. Motion is sent Bill 14-22 to Community Relations Committee and Public hearing a third reading for April 11, 2022.
So move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded for Bill 14-22. May I have a vote by acclamation? We're doing, by acclamation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's carried. Unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business from the council at this time?
Yes, there is. And I wanted to bear with me for a moment. We, I think it was, the date is, the date was March 21, 2022. I sent a message, a letter to President McBride and three of the members from the council for clarification and also for help. I asked for support because I have been getting stories and conversations about how I am a detriment to my district and I am not necessarily helping my district. I am not signing up for lights. I'm not signing up for, you know, infrastructure updates, things that I think that are completely offbeat and it's coming from members of the council. I'm not going to name any names right now because I think that that is sufficient. But what I will say is that South, I mean, South Bend is the second district of the city, the district that I represent. We have a list of probably like seven different projects that's going on. Marloth King Jr. Center, Neighborhood Plans for the Kennedy Park Neighborhood Association, Monroe Park Neighborhood Association, and the Northwest, Near Northwest Side Neighborhood Association. You have demolition projects that need to happen in order for the district itself to grow, which is the Jewry's Building, the building that's on Sample Street that is, has decayed because of the fire last year and years and years of not being used. You have several of these manufacturing plants that's off of Circle Avenue across the street from, across the street from Frankie's Barbecue. You have the factory that's on Cherry Street. And you have Beck's Lake, which you just got back and we figured out that there was contamination. You have the South Bend Housing Authority. You have the, still dealing with and have been confronted with a thousand houses a thousand days with the lights, the lots, excuse me, and the overgrown fields and weeds that we have to take care of because of the houses being knocked down. You have the container home projects that are going to happen on Pagan Street. And there has been two rounds of federal funding that has gone to the administration. There has not been any affordable housing plans put together. You have a third coming in this summer, around a July, June, July, Mark, which is going to be more millions of dollars for us to help plan and reduce or to bring up the area as it relates to housing. None of these things have been put on paper. I've asked for help from three, four members of this council. I get a phone call from one, but the rest I have not. And when I'm, the point I'm going to make and the point that I'm trying to make is that if we're not here to help each other, then we shouldn't be here trying to hurt the next person. Those things are real things. That contamination thing over there in LaSalle Park is real. Many of you grew up in that area, so did I. I'm sure that we have been recipients of lead and also arsenic in our system during the course of the time that we lived over there. I am sure that that's been it. And there needs to be a focus on what is happening with people of lower economic scale and people of color in this city because every place that I just named off of this list, that's where we sit, that's where we live, and that's in our environment. So again, I ask for help. I'm asking for more help. I just don't understand why the help hasn't come or why I haven't gotten more phone calls or emails from members of the council that I sent this email to.
Well, if I, I can speak for myself for why I didn't respond because the same access that I have and the same issues that I have in the third district, I'm the third district representative and the president, which just runs the meetings and have one of nine votes, but that's some of the same issues regarding whether it's housing, poverty, regarding the census information that we receive. We have the same type of disparities. So my job in the third district is to address the needs of the third district. And one of, the second point I would make is the budget of 2022, the items that you emailed, most of those things that you named are in the budget that most of us passed from the council. And which, in fact, you were one who did not vote for things that was in the 2022 budget. But those things that are lighting, the demos and all that stuff is in this year's budget that we passed overall. So that's just my comment. I don't know who else was, I don't remember who else the email was referred to, but I can speak to myself.
It went to you as well as the three at-large members. That's what went to, Rachel's not here, so you can't talk for her. So I, I talk to Lori on a regular basis, so I, I understand where she's at.
Thank you.
But what I will say is that regardless of my vote, if you have the same issues in your area as I have in my area, the collaboration should be a lot stronger than you shutting me off or saying that that's your problem and this is my problem. It's a citywide issue because when you vote for the budget, the budget is not for per-district. It's for the city across the board.
I agree. And it's just if it's reciprocated both ways, we definitely can work together.
Well, you haven't asked me for any help.
That's because I represent the district that I serve. And if it's something that we vote on together that we need, I'm also always been an advocate of supporting, whether it's in my district or not. I was a firm believer in supporting the Housing Authority. I was a firm believer in, for the Jewry's and things of that nature.
And I still need that help. My support has been there. The building is still up there.
And I'll yield my.
And that building still has asbestos that's leaking into the sewer system. It's the same conversation. As well as when you did become the president of South Bend Common Council, you took on a role of leadership to help facilitate the necessary conversations and also policy matters that impact the city as it relates to each district or just the entire city as a whole.
Thank you so much.
So you don't get to pick and choose with how you participate and help people out.
I can when I represent a district. I'm not an at-large councilperson. So when my vote comes for one person, my role as the president of the council is to run the meetings.
No, that's not your role.
And to also give the standing committees in which, what I've done. Other than that, I support by coming to all the meetings and functions. But like I said, if you look at the budget and the things that you vote in and it does matter, if you are asking for the same help in which you voted against, that's difficult to assist.
No, it's not difficult to assist because the money that I asked.
When you didn't vote for it in your own district.
But I, no, I voted for it against the whole entire city budget. That's what you're missing in that. You keep saying it's district-based.
I'm not missing it, it's public.
Our budget is not district-based. Our district is not, our, our, our district-based, our budget isn't. Our budget is citywide. And if you have the same, but if you have those same issues.
We can have this conversation later on.
No, we're going to have it now.
No, no, we're not.
Why can't we?
Because you and I can have this conversation.
You don't talk to me. You just said that you don't talk to me.
No, I didn't say I didn't talk to you.
Yes, you did. I just asked you for help and you just said that you aren't willing to help. You said you had the third district.
I said the reason why I did not, because if there's a light out or something happening in the second district, I go to those meetings, I reach out, and I do what I am tasked to do in the third district. I'm not an at-large council member. But I also have supported of everything that you've asked by approving the budget per my vote. Is there any other comments or unfinished business at this time?
I say we move on to new business.
Unless there's other unfinished business that someone else has?
I would just like to say that I do think it's important that we revisit some of the ARPA funds that, as a council, we set aside. We were not in full agreement as to some of the proposals that came from the administration around budget time. And we do want to make sure that we get those funds appropriately assigned.
Thank you. And I believe that we do have an, a copy of the APRA funds that we approved during that budget, so it will show what the balance remaining is in it. So I'll make sure everyone get a copy of that.
Thank you.
I would, I would just second that. I think sometimes between appropriations and when things come into play. So instead of waiting until later on for inter-budget transfers, maybe it would make sense to get an update to see if there is any changes from the budget.
And I, and I think if my memory serves me right, the last update that I had asked for was that most of the monies we appropriated for APRA, but it was not passed. Well, it's, it's in appropriation for housing, demolition, and green functions and things of that nature is all outlined. But being that we did not pass the salaries, it held up the, from the administrations. But we do have the layout still of what we appropriated. So that, we'll make sure that that's sent out to everybody again.
Yeah, President McBride, I have been in dialogue with Mr. Parker.
Okay.
So I'm in the, getting that date set up.
Thank you.
Hey, hear what you say?
Should be getting that personal finance date set up for that.
Thank you so much. Is there any new business? At this time, we will open it up for Privileges of the Floor.
We have someone virtually, I believe, Lee Davis. Mr. Davis, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Let me make the statement, please, before.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Disrespectful rule or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speeches or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any one person, may result in an individual without notice forfeiting the remainder of his allotted times. Individuals who wish to address the council must state their name and residential address. Individuals will be limited to three minutes only. The maximum time limit for this portion of the meeting shall be 30 minutes. Individuals should not be permitted to address topics which the council has heard previously tonight on the agenda. The council president may assign a topic raised by an individual during the privileges of the floor to the appropriate council member and/or request the city clerk to contact a member of the city administration for review and topics assigned shall be responded to at the next scheduled council meeting. Clerk Jones?
Okay. We have two speakers. The first is Lee Davis. Mr. Davis, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Lee Davis from South Bend. I've been to the Whole Woman's Health Clinic on Lincoln Way. Regardless of how we feel about abortion, the protesters there are very noisy, disturbing the peace, and they are rude. Standing with their signs, the protesters obstruct the traffic line of sight getting in and out of the clinic. They had a tent there Saturday that got blown off the grass into the street and inside the tent were two kids. This was very unsafe. I know that they're standing on public property, but this was dangerous for everyone involved, even people driving by on Lincoln Way. I'm concerned for the safety of the patients and the protesters. Our police need to enforce the obstruction and noise laws and cool things off out there so that something worse doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have John. John, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Sorry, but I'm not sure why it says John, but this is Jordan, 424 South Michigan Street, Unit 660, South Bend, Indiana, 46601. I just wanted to share some thoughts. I'm really happy to see that Rebuilding Together is receiving CDBG funds to do home repair work out in the far west side areas. I know specifically there's going to be a number of houses addressed in the Lakeside. But I think it's also important to note that, that in the last budget cycle, there were a number of people in, a number of organizations in District 2 that actually pressed Henry to vote against the budget because there was a lack of clarity around where the funding and the dollars that were proposed were actually going to go. So we have reached out, had. So we have reached out, had called for meetings with council members, sent in comments, concerns, asking specifically where these dollars would go. For example, we wanted to know if there would be a housing plan, if housing dollars for a plan would actually come to the Lakeside, just as other neighborhoods had received funding last year for, um, a neighborhood plan, I'm sorry, I meant a neighborhood plan. And so, I know there were at least five or six organizations, neighborhood groups, you know, um, uh, just activist organizations that had met with Henry and put pressure on him to ensure that the mayor was clear about where those dollars would go, would go, and clear with the council. And there was a lack of clarity there. And so I feel like that's kind of where a lot of this confusion is, is because it's not clear to the public or to those of us who've been pressing for dollars to specifically come to our areas. It's not clear to us what exactly is coming. So if there's a way that folks can try to collaborate, you know, to ensure that folks who've been waiting a long time actually get the support that they want, I think we could move, um, in a, in a better fashion and get things done.
Thank you so much, Mr. Geiger. Anyone else? Clerk Jones?
Yes, we have Kat Redding. Ms. Redding, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Hi, yes, Catherine Redding, um, and that is four-one-eight Lamont Terrace, South Bend, Indiana. Um, it seems to me that, um, what Henry is asking for is he's asking for support. I know that, um, many other districts and census tracts also have, uh, lead contaminants. Actually, there's nine other, um, uh, census tracts that has also been identified with, uh, lead poisoning, and I don't think it's too much to ask that, um, as city-elected officials, uh, we come together and figure out a reasonable way forward to spearhead, uh, the eighty percent of the housing stock that contains lead contaminants. Um, this, to me, uh, it's essentially, uh, injustice to the black and brown community. Um, so if we can figure out a way forward together, I think absolutely what Henry's saying is very relevant, um, to our conditions in this community. And, um, if we, if we can't find a way forward, we're just spinning the wheel and, you know, uh, at, at that point, I mean, I, I just have to say it's arbitrary to think that, you know, uh, you know, just because we're not elected officials, not, uh, essentially, you know, uh, uh, what is it, uh, uh, you know, based on their district, you know? If they're not at large, that's what I was looking for. Um, this is, you know, gonna take all of us, um, to come together and figure out, uh, a reasonable, a reasonable way forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Redding, for your comments. Clerk Jones, anyone else?
No, that exhausts our lists, unless we have someone present.
Yes, I see. Please state your name and address when you get to the microphone.
Good evening, council. My name is Marva Williams, nine-four-six East Soren Street in South Bend. I want to start off by saying that I am very nervous and I hope I make it through this, but I've been having a problem with the lead program. And it's taken me, it's going on four years now, that they have just started on my home. And they're about finished with it. During the time before they even started on my home, excuse me, my home in the basement's full of black mold. Ceilings falling down in my bedroom. I've just been having so many problems with that house, like I said, I've been in it since sixty-eight, and trying to reach out here and there for help. During this time, someone told me to go to, uh, Heritage Foundation, and I went to them, and I had told Mr. Marco Murray what my problem was. And he told me he thought that they could help me with it. But I was speaking about the mold and the fountain in my bedroom, ceiling falling down, and then in the bathroom. And he asked me at that time, "How was my roof?" And I told him I thought it was okay, but there's some leaking in the house. He asked me about my hot water heater, and I told him I thought it was okay. So he told me that they would try to help me out. So he sent over Mr., I believe his name was Sadafi. And he was speaking to me and telling me just what they could do for me. So I told him, "Okay," so they came to the house, checked things out. And then at that time, I was thinking they were going to address these problems that I was having, but they were basically talking about putting me on, on a new roof where the leakage in my house, and that we would go from there. Well, as of today, I still, they didn't do everything that they said that they would do. And it was, I thought that it would have been a grant. But I come to find out when Mr. Sadafi was talking to me, it was for ten thousand, and I had to pay the five thousand back. And like I said, my back was up against the wall then, and I just went ahead and, and said I would. And I signed agreement form, and they put me on my house, telling me that I could stay in my home long as I'm living, but when I, when I'm gone, that that debt would have to be paid back. And I told him, "Okay," I just did not have the money, and I just didn't know what to do because I'd been waiting on this other organization for over three years. And I have family there, great-grandkids as well as grandkids, and I just couldn't take it any longer. So Mr. Mario came, Marco came, came out the house, and we sat on the porch and we talked about the situation and everything. And I usually read over everything, but then, like I said, my back was up against the wall and something had to be taken care of. So I had signed it then, but ever since, this has been two years ago, and ever since then, I've regretted signing it because that is my only legacy for my family as well as myself. And I've been worried to death about this ever since this has happened and regretted that I ever signed it. And I just don't have the five thousand dollars to pay it back. But I know, like I said, I signed that paper and that was my fault. But at the time, like I said, my back was up against the wall, and I'd been reaching out, reaching out, reaching out for help. So, like I said, they finally came after almost four years this year and started doing the work on the home. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, do you have copies of the, Ms. Williams?
Pardon me?
Do you have copies of the contract?
Yes, I do.
Okay, if, if you don't mind giving it to the clerk's office to make a copy, please?
Yes, I will.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? With that being, uh, said, there's nothing, no one else, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
I grew up on the east side. I've been in my home since sixty-eight. It used to be Patterson. I've married nobody, but I've been at this address since sixty-eight. I used to live on South Bend Avenue way back in the day. Oh, I live further down, further down. You know where, uh, what is it, South Bend Avenue and St. Peter's Street? Right down that corner. I hope I don't sound too bad. I'm nervous to wreck. I've never stood up here before. I, but I've just been, I've just been swinging heavy on my heart because I, so much time I was just taking a bath. I appreciate because I'm trying to think every kind of way. I would say that this has gotten, you know, it's not allowed to let people to me. I'm seventy-five years old and I'm, my mother's very sick. I don't get to touch the air that's high. You know, I mean, snap, like I said, it's kind of and at the time, I just felt like, you know, the area that I'm in, trying and my daughter, Rhonda. Yes. Yes. And I said it's bad enough I haven't not told her about this, and I don't want her to know that. Cause I don't want her, you know, I'm speaking, and I don't want to be keeping. I don't want to hear her mouth. I'm doing that on my mouth, but I'm trying to take care of this myself. I don't want to hear her mouth.
Yeah, I just didn't feel. But then you don't have to.
And this wasn't, this is what triggered the thought. I, I'm not, that's, I just think that might be easier for everybody so that everybody understands expectation that you can see they're not caught off guard. And that they could see that it's applied.
It's probably a really good idea, especially if it's a clock that shows the countdown so they can see it.
And then, yeah, we just need, I'm assuming you just have like, somebody has a control.
Yep, that's a good idea. Normally, I'm pretty close, fourth and fifteen seconds, but you know. You're a brave man, sitting between Sharon and the gab on again.
Which they know this, they know this, because the gentleman might talk to her, but exactly what he was saying to her. Not Mark, but then that works hard, Sadafi. I can't stand it, I can't. Oh.
I thought something was bothering you.
Inspector, somebody to come and inspect your home? Do you have an, no, I'm talking about somebody not from Heritage.
No, the city had sent an inspector.
Okay, I, I used to work for the city. I was an inspector for the city for fifteen years. In fact, I was the best inspector in three states. So if you want me to come over there and look at it, and I can write it up for you to give you something to present. Heritage Foundation is full of dudus. They've been that way since inception.
Yes, and like I was saying.
I heard you.